Or organization, so I wanted to highlight that. Also, yesterday I got a chance to stop by. The repainting touch up from the local artist, young artists, actually, the younger generation of artists that were touching up the Black Lives Matter mural in front of City Hall. And I want to also give a shout out to Alandis Powell, who just, you know, keeps this going. And they were out there repainting and are still repainting and just to see the young artists, the next generation of artists, helping to touch it up. So I did get a chance to stop by and say hello to them. I also had a meeting with regarding the county's first ever small business office. And looking forward to some new things coming up. We want to be the county number one for small businesses. We've gotten, we've given over 11 million plus dollars to help small businesses through a very difficult times as it relates to COVID. We were able to have grants. We want to build on that. We want to be the place where after coming out of COVID, we are the number one place for small businesses to come and open up their businesses. We have a whole mindset of people, both young and more seasoned, who have said, we want to be entrepreneurs. We want to own our own business. We have, we want to use our, our creative intellectual gifts to be able to start a business and be a part of the American dream. So I'm looking forward. One of the things I really wanted in this budget, I said, let's get a small business office that's directly for small businesses. Now, we're not talking about all we want to do is coach somebody. We go coach you, we go, we got a workshop for you. No, we're talking about real business because small businesses are very much struggling out here every single day trying to hang on. There are business districts and our different jurisdictions. There are storefronts. They are the, they are the future and they are now. And so looking forward to having that. And I wanted to let my colleagues know, one of the things that I'm pushing for is to host an annual Small Business Day in Hamilton County. I did it when I was at the city and I helped put the city of Cincinnati's first ever Small Business Office. That was one of my initiatives. And then at the state, we had a state day in my district called Small Business Day. So you'll be getting more information to our colleagues for us hosting that where we can have a place where every year, I was going to start this year, hopefully in the fall. And every year, small businesses can come, not just get a pamphlet, but come and be able to connect with real, live opportunities for small business. So looking forward, Alloy is our operator of our Small Business Office. And we're looking forward to working and developing that. But I wanted to get that on your calendars that we're looking at sometime in the fall after Labor Day. The other piece that I wanted to also highlight that we're still working, everybody said, where's that bus? I need that bus. The 513 relief bus, I'm on them every week, trying to say, where is this bus? But we are still trying to get the parts and ready to go for a permanent bus. And administrator and his comments could talk about the temporary bus to get that back out and going. But I wanted to put people on their schedule because people still need help. We still got people who can't pay the gas and electric, can't pay the water bill. And certainly with the economy going the way it's going now, gas prices jumping through the roof. You know, gas for your car, $5 a gallon. You've got inflation. You've got the interest rates just went from 2% to 5%. It's hard out here. Babies are trying to find milk, still trying to find milk. So with that, last year I hosted a relief-a-thon and we did it virtually. And we were able to help a lot of people, 700 families we were able to help. This year, we're going to do a relief-a-thon in person and led by Jobs and Family Services. It's going to be June the 25th. It's going to be at Woodline Recreation Center and hosted by, co-hosted by us and the mayor, Camden County, as well as the mayor of Woodline. And that will be taking place on June the 25th. But we have more information. People can go online now and free register. So when you get there, because Water Works will be there, Duke Energy will be there. And when you leave there, our computers will hit their computers and it will be able to say, you got your stuff in and a payment is on the way. So that they don't cut off your water, they don't cut off your gas and electric. So just want to put that out there, Madam President, so people can start putting on their calendars and getting their paperwork together. And just to let everyone know that we, as a county and a board, we're still working every single day that we can to try to get this help to you and make sure people can get the help they need and understanding that people still out there need help. So just wanted to say that. Oh, my last thing, I'm sorry, Madam President, I forgot to say this when we were doing our prayer. And I'm sure you are familiar with this person, but I wanted to make sure our board acknowledges, we do want to send our prayers to the city of Forest Park on the passing of Officer Marty Strong, 18-year veteran who passed from a rare case of cancer. So just prayer for his family and everyone in the city of Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. I too was going to mention the flag raising that we all went to earlier today in recognition and celebration of the Juneteenth holiday, that it is correct to say, Madam President, you led the way on this, led the county before others were even thinking about honoring Juneteenth as a holiday. We were way ahead of the curve on that. So it is important that we recognize this and that our employees take a moment to remember and commemorate the day and celebrate that everyone enjoys freedom now and, you know, did not at that time. So it was a great event. I too am anxious about FIFA. I'm very bullish about FIFA. I think we're going to get the bid, but none of us know yet. So I'm anxious to have the celebration this afternoon when we get the bid and when it is announced. I have no inside information, by the way. Don't, please don't misinterpret my words. If any of the press is listening, I have no idea if we're going to get it or not. I'm very optimistic. And then I went to the jobs fair, I took my staff. The jobs fair was really a wonderful event. It was really a showcase of all the opportunities that exist within the county organization for people to gain employment and, you know, at a competitive wage with good benefits. We've got our tuition reimbursement, we've got a parental leave policy. So the county is a great place to work. And I want to thank Bridget Darty for all the information that she continued to push out to promote the jobs fair and help organize it. But many, many of the county departments were there. And it was really, it was fun to have everybody in the room at the same time. And it was like one big family promoting the county and encouraging people to apply. And we had a lot of folks coming through that were applying for jobs. And I think somebody at JFS, I think somebody got hired on the spot from what I heard. So it was a success. And so I was really delighted to run over there. Speaking of JFS, I went to their graduation ceremony, the celebration of dreams for the kids that are in foster care that graduated from a variety of high schools throughout the county. It's really a significant moment for these kids, for their mentors, for their families. And there was a big celebration downtown at a hotel. It was very well done. JFS was, you know, celebrating these young people and they were thrilled to be recognized in that way. And it was, it was just a lot of fun, a lot of cheering and a lot of smiling and back patting to congratulate these young kids because they really made quite the achievement. And then finally, I represented the commission. We all signed on to the healthcare worker proclamation to recognize healthcare workers in Hamilton County, particularly as we have now, we think, come out of COVID, but really thank the healthcare workers that were frontline workers during that time, putting themselves at risk. And so I read the proclamation on Fountain Square on behalf of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Jeff Aluto.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few comments before a few by leave items. First, just to pile on to the job fair, I just want to thank everyone on county staff who helped either put this on or hold it yesterday. It was great. It was a great event. I stopped over there later on in the day. It was great to see everybody interacting, the members of the public that were there. I know we had a really good turnout. And Commissioner Dreehouse's point, it was really nice just to see all the different departments interacting and understanding what everybody did. Did have to break up a few instances of potential poaching amongst departments. So we want to make sure that, looking at you, Brad Johnson. So just, we, so you got to, we got to keep check on that. But overall, you know, it was fantastic event. So more than anything, just want to thank all of the, all the members of the public who came out and all the departments and employees who helped put that on. Also want to thank any department that was involved with the storms this week. So EMA, we've all been getting emails from Nick Crossley and him, the coordination of the cooling centers, county facilities, county engineer, the sheriff, everyone who had, who had a hand in making sure that the public was kept safe as, as these storms came through, through Hamilton County, they did a fantastic job. Also want to thank 911, the communication center. They received 960 calls over a four-hour period during the storm. So just an incredible amount of work coming in to the, to the department. But want to thank them and congratulate them on some great work on behalf of the public. And finally, wanted to congratulate Environmental Services as well, I think, as the board was made aware. This is the first time in, that I can remember that we have achieved compliance in the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for ground level ozone or essentially smog, which is a significant pollutant that can be harmful to people, especially those with, with pre-existing conditions, the, especially young or especially elderly, those with things like emphysema, asthma, et cetera. And now being in compliance with that standard is a great thing for the environment, also a great thing for the economy of this, of this region. So just wanted to, to thank all the staff over at Environmental Services on the air quality side, Brad Johnson, Mike Kramer, Carrie Castlin, all those folks who do a great job every day to, to keep our region in compliance and congratulate the department on, on that achievement. Just a one other item before I get to some by leaves. Vice President Reese had a question about the temporary bus. We are working with University of Cincinnati again on the delivery of a temporary bus in advance of, of the permanent bus coming later on this year, which is the board is aware has been, we, there is a significant amount of supply disruption in the market for these types of, of large buses and vehicles. So in the meantime, just to make sure that we don't have service gap, we've reached back out to our partner at UC and they were willing to, to step in and assist us with that temporary bus, which served well last year. Certainly, the, the permanent bus is going to have more capabilities and allow for more seamless delivery of services, but this will be helpful in the, in the interim. Right now, we're getting that checked up through the county engineer's office. Want to thank county engineer Beck and his staff for all their help and, and helping to get that bus prepared to, to hit the streets here shortly. So thank you. Do you have a couple of by leaves? The first by leave I'm going to turn over, I believe Lauren is here to talk. And we have Jack Rennecamp and Larry Falcon here also from the city. I'm assuming about the, about the same item for a Lick Run Greenway litter grant that was received by MSD. So I'll turn it over to Lauren for some specific information on the grant.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This legislative request is for acceptance and appropriation of an Ohio EPA 2022 Community and Litter Grant, as well as authorization to execute the related grant agreement. O EPA has awarded $46,407 in grant funding and also requires a 20% match from MSD, which will be funded out of our approved 2022 non-personnel operating budget for our wastewater collection division. And that is in the amount of $11,602 for a total grant project budget of $58,009. The grant project funds will be used at the Lick Run Greenway primarily, as well as other MSD-operated sites. And it will be used for the purpose of proactive litter control, including purchasing supplies for our third annual Lick Run Greenup, long-term rental of a billboard to promote recycling, hiring of Lick Run ambassadors via the Cincinnati Recreation Commission's Youth-to-Work Program, and procurement and usage of surveillance cameras to help control littering and illegal dumping in the vicinity of Lick Run, as well as other sites. And I have with me today Larry Falcon, who is our assistant superintendent of the wastewater collection division. He can provide some more details, as well as invitations to events at the Lick Run Greenway.
Thank you, Lauren, and thank you commissioners for the opportunity to speak today. It's our commitment at MSD that the Lick Run Greenway be a safe, clean, and welcoming facility for the use of the entire community. We're working hard to bring vitality to that green space. You have at your desk flyers for a number of upcoming activities that we're sponsoring there. And one of the things that we've encountered since we've been operating the facility, as you all know, it's just a little over a year old now, is a much higher burden of littering and illegal dumping at the facility than we anticipated. And so this grant from Ohio EPA is very welcome in giving us some additional resources to make sure that we keep the facility safe, clean, and welcoming for everybody who wants to use it.
Thank you so much. And as I was looking at your posters, I see presented by the South Fairmont Community Council and MSD. So anytime you have a community council partnering with someone, we, we really need to support it. It's a pop-up concert, June the 22nd at 7:00 PM. And then there's another free concert, June the 18th at Lick Run Greenway, 4 to 6. I'm not telling you, everybody who's listening, so that's a, and then there's a yoga in the park, World Peace Yoga. And that's in August, every Sunday. No, every Sunday, June 19th through August.
Starting this Sunday for eight Sundays, Sunday at 4 o'clock, yoga in the park.
Awesome. And that also has South Fairmount Council on there. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this item?
Just one quick comment. I drive by this whenever I go visit my mom, which is pretty frequently. And I just want to say that Lick Run has become a very popular spot for big birthday parties and graduation parties. Those, those shelters are well-used, well-decorated too, for those events, balloons and streamers and everything. So it has taken on a new positive life since the project's been completed. So I commend you for that, that I know was exactly the point, right? To bring some vitality to the area. And I just love this idea of the concerts. You know, the noise merchants, I don't know if that's James Noise, who works for the county? Is, is James Noise a musician? Do we not know this about James? I don't know. I just think it's kind of a.
Commissioner, I just checked slightly different spelling.
Oh, all right, all right. Nevermind.
I was thinking the same exact thing.
Listen to James Noise play a flute. I don't know. But no, these are great. And, and I see that the Queen City Pollinators are a part of activating the space too. And I happen to be a member of the, that group. So I, I think it would be fun to show the kids how the bees, you know, come and go from the hive and learn a little something related to the ecology of that. So just really impressive.
Queen City Pollinators is one of many organizations that we partnered with to bring vitality to the space, including the South Fairmont Community Council. But Queen City Pollinators has placed a couple of beehives there and is able to do beekeeping, training classes and education, and also bring attention to the native pollinators that are also there at the Greenway, feasting on the fields of wildflowers that are in bloom right now. So if you haven't seen them, come out and check out our fields of wildflowers.
It's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. By leave item number two in your packet, this is a resolution authorizing adjustments to the bank's Phase 3 park finishes agreement. This is a, an agreement with Progressive Stone to add 229,294 for park finishes related to the granite. The administration recommends approval. Phil Becca is here if there are any specific questions about the by leave, commissioners.
Thank you so much. Did you have some comments you'd like to make?
No commissioners, no comments unless you have questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam President, are you going to take the, the next three by leaves?
Yes, sir. So you have before you by leave three, we're looking at boards and commissions and we're always asking people that are interested in being a part of a board or commission, please look on our website and put in for where your interests are. And if for some reason you chose an area and you were not chosen this time, please look at another area that you might be instrumental in. So by leave three is a resolution appointing one member to the Hamilton County Earthworks Appeal Board, Douglas Seelhorst. Any discussion on that? I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And before you, you have by leave four, a resolution appointing four members to the Board of Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Board, Christine Wilder, who's being reappointed, Sandra C. Driggins Smith appointed, Tracy Henry appointed, and Gary Powell appointed. Any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And under by leave five, we have a resolution appointing three members to the Hamilton County Tax Incentive Review Council, Tom Moller, Jessica Johnson, David Thompson. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Before we move forward to new business, wanted to make a couple of comments. Just wanted to thank, as we talked about the flag raising, I just wanted to thank Bridget specifically for working with, setting up that facility area and also our facility staff who helped with our, our flag raising. And we had another gentleman who was a Buffalo soldier who came and helped with the fundraising. Also, the sheriff came with lots of her staff, Judy Luber came, and also our engineer, Eric Beck, we thank you for coming. So I wanted to make sure we thank everyone who took time out of their busy schedule. Okay, so under regular agenda, we have our county engineer, Mr. Beck. Okay, wait a minute.
First, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, let's do this public hearing.
It's me also.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, this is a, a public hearing is required to distribute the 2022 municipal road funds. The county engineer is tasked with distributing the license plate fees that are collected in municipalities annually. In 2021, we collected $2.39 million. We're recommending awarding $2,130,806, which funds 11 of the 21 projects that were submitted for review for this year. The 10, there are, excuse me, the 11 projects that we're recommending are the city of Cincinnati Bridge Maintenance, which is part of our annual agreement with the city, Arlington Heights, Galbraith Road, Harrison, Harrison Avenue Improvements, the Villa Marymont for Hiawatha, City of Norwood for Smith Road and Carthage Avenue, Lachlan for Shepherd Avenue, Deer Park for Plainfield Road, Springdale for Northland Boulevard, Reading for Furman, Chevyat for Applegate Avenue, and Madera for Miami Avenue. So this hearing is to allow for anybody to make any comments they may have on this, for the board to approve the list.
Thank you so much. Is anyone here for the public hearing? And I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. A regular agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Item number one is a resolution for the, to award the bid for the Kennedy Avenue Improvements, which is project 502104. It's located in Columbia Township. The rehab and improvement of Kennedy Avenue from the South Cincinnati Corp line to the North Cincinnati Corp line. We opened bids on April 14th. The low bidder was Proust Construction at $1,158,808.80. Just 1% over our engineer's estimate, and we recommend that you approve that.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments to item one? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Item two?
Item number two is a resolution to install no parking signs in the west side of Lawrenceburg Road in Whitewater Township, from a point 220 feet north of the intersection of Stevens Road to a point 180 feet south of Stevens Road. Parking along the road is causing a sight distance problem for vehicles entering the road from Stevens Road. So we're asking that the commissioners authorize the establishment of a no parking zone.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number three is a resolution approving a consultant agreement with Martin and Wood Appraisal Group for property appraisals on the Fields Zertle Road Improvement Project. It's located in Sycamore and Sims Township. The agreement is for $29,875 coming out of the Permissive Auto Fund.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve item three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to make a correction, my chief of staff to help, help me. I kind of messed up a name when I was trying to thank people. And I should have said Judge Jody Lubers. And I, I said Judy Luber. I knew it didn't feel right when it came out. So I, I thank her and I know her name very well. So thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda items, items four through 19. I just wanted to say a little bit about. Number seven is a resolution authorizing the use of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is known as CARES Act, funding for public safety payroll expenses. We have to spend that money. And we had indicated as a board that public safety would be a good place to, to allocate that money to. So there's $8.8 million going toward that. Item nine is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a third agreement to the sub recipient agreement between the board and the United Way of Greater Cincinnati. There were some nonprofits that had some issues during great work, but we were trying to help them find, financially submit the information we needed to do and to have and review, but maybe possibly didn't have a, a paid auditor. So we're, we're figuring that out. And that's what this is for, to help those nonprofits that are doing great work. Item 10 is Alternative Sentencing Center. Talbert House is going to be operating for $1.4 million. Item 11, regarding the large event blink we talked earlier about, to assist them in the production of that. That's only assistance, we're not doing the, the whole bill on that. And item 12 is a budget adjustment to the CARES Act funding and grants to the Coroner, Sheriff, Mental Health and Recovery Services, and Addiction Response Coalition. Let's see, that was all that I had. I'll pass it on to Vice President Reese. Did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Do have comments. I'll start with item number four. Item number four comes from our Economic Development Department powered by Alloy. It deals with Stigler that came forward, I think a week ago or two weeks ago. The expansion in Forest Park, they had a presentation and I just wanted to acknowledge, this is a project supported by the city of Forest Park. And we're supporting it today and creating more jobs and expanding in the Forest Park area. So I wanted to acknowledge that. I think that's a very good thing and very happy to support that. And I think will be very good for the city of Forest Park. Item number six, I want to get into, this is our purchase orders. And I always want to pay close attention to this because we're always looking at how do we become more diverse in those folks being able to participate in, for being contractors with the county. And this comes from our purchasing department. And I just had two, one, two, two of them that I wanted to just get a little more clarity on. One is advertising vehicles. And wanted to find out, is that something? And that's from our environmental services department. It's $29,978. And it's a contract here that I'm trying to figure out, did this come to an ad agency? I know it'd be advertised. I know it'd be advertising on the Metro buses as well as advertising on the I guess it's called Cincinnati Bell Connector now. Is this, is this directly to those entities? Or was this an ad agency? Because a lot of times one of the issues is, as it relates to ad agencies, diverse ad agencies haven't been able to, you know, typically partner and participate with us. And I'm certainly wanting to look into that. I didn't know if this is a bid thing or does it fall under consulting? Or is this directly, I doubt Metro would have, you pay them directly. I'm sure they have some kind of ad agency you have to go through.
Yeah, Madam President, Madam Vice President, this is a, an advertise, specifically to, to Ad exposure, I think is the name of the, of the firm. It was for $29,978. It is for transit advertising for things like food waste reduction, recycling, et cetera. I know the Director Johnson is here. I don't know, Brad, if you have any additional information on the on the contract that you could provide to the board at this time?
Thank you. And my comment is not about what we're advertising. I'm more interested in the agency that's providing. Is this only agency that does this? Or was this a bid?
No, this was not a bid. This was through the, the marketing consulting. But yes, this would be the first time that we do this type of marketing. And it, it actually is for food waste. I know that's not with the question you're asking, but what it does strategically, we can move to the location of the food waste advertising to shelters where there might be marginalized communities where we have more food waste issues. So that was the intent of going this direction. It's a new direction for us.
Got you. I just wanted to look at, because when we get into advertising and marketing area, I'm very familiar with. It seems to be sometimes a lockout of minority firms to participate in advertising. Unless we're trying to advertise with the radio, we'll go directly to Radio One. We don't go to a media buyer. We don't go to a marketer. And I've gotten some calls from people in that area that said they just can't get in. And they usually fall under the consulting. And so there, it's not a bid process. So just wanted to look at ways to get them and not marginalize them to just urban marketing, but to see if there's opportunity. But it's hard to have opportunity if we're not bidding, if we're not reaching out, if they don't have a, I just, I don't know how they would be able to participate or get in.
We'd be more than happy. We certainly use the, the bold list for most of our purchasing, with the exception of marketing and consulting and advertising. But yeah, absolutely, we'll be happy to. Are they, do you know if they're on the bold list? Have these companies mentioned that?
Yeah, I don't know. Because like you said, advertising and marketing, we're not bidding it out. So they normally.
We do often bid it out, but this was a one shop. They're the only ones that offer this service. So that was the reason we went with this. And it does, it does offer you areas outside of the urban corridor too. So you can pick and choose. And it has changed a little bit with the streetcar. With the, the marketing going from Cincinnati Bell over to, I believe it's Alta. So they've informed us that that has changed because that was part of it as well. But it is exclusive to just Metro, the services that they offer.
Got you. Thank you. Yeah, I just, as the administrator in that area, consulting, we spend a lot of money in consulting. We spend money and we're going to be spending more money in marketing. And sometimes those, that industry flies under the radar because those are not bid type of things. So just want to see if we could come up with something that is some type of outreach to this particular industry to see, allow them to participate in things that might be coming up for us. So.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
The other question I had on this, and I asked this of the administrator, so you probably have an answer to this question. But we were looking at Paul Brown Stadium. We had a temporary contract for cutting the grass. And, you know, I just look at these areas. These are the areas that I think we could, you know, maybe get more people involved. Because I know there's diverse people that have grass cutting services and can cut grass. And so I had asked that question. I know it was a maybe a temporary, but just wanted to know, was that an outreach or?
Yeah, we, so we have been doing outreach. I have not been able to run down yet whether this particular one, whether we had MBE and Bold vendors submit on it. But I know down at the stadiums, we did have several instances where we had some contracts like this where we had Bold vendors that did bid. I just have not been able to run down yet whether this one did have a specific Bold or MBE vendor quote on this one. But I should be able to. In fact, while we've been sitting here, I just got a, an email from the purchasing department that sorts out all the stuff by Bold and MBE vendors. So this afternoon, I should be able to provide you with a, an answer on that.
Okay, that was great. And I see on here, we do have one vendor on security access control, ADA upgrades. We do have a MBE on here. So we are making some progress. I just want to get back to making sure that we're getting these quarterly reports. We were getting them quarterly. You know, as the quarter ends, I'd like to get those in a timely fashion. So we could kind of see where we're improving, where we need to improve. So we like to get them on a quarterly basis. So after we get done with the fourth, first quarter, and we get to second quarter, we should get first quarter reports, all of us. And then we could kind of see where we're, where, where we're going and how we can improve. The other thing that I do want to, I do want to highlight, Madam President, is the item number. Item number nine, I wanted to highlight that. There, we had a lot of people, we had a grant program that we put out and we did it through United Way. And a lot of the smaller nonprofits is yourself and I know myself, yourself, as well as Commissioner Drehouse, we were concerned about how do we get some of these smaller grassroots nonprofits, some assistance? And so just wanted to highlight item number nine. We've got over a million dollars through United Way to just really focus on those smaller grassroots groups. And so when this gets passed, maybe, you know, getting the information to each of us and we could reply back to some of those people who had reached out to our offices and make sure we're promoting it so that they know that they have a chance to compete for these small grants for smaller nonprofits. And my last thing is item number 11. The Blink Award. And we heard from Blink earlier. I, I support this. I, I don't see them. I know we, we highlight them as large event grants, but I'm more look, I look at them more on a tourism standpoint. I look at this as tourism grants. We need people coming here. And these are ongoing events that bring large crowds as well as lots of publicity as well. So, and the other thing is I also see a diverse age groups participating as well, families. So I do support this grant. I also want to highlight that I'm excited if we were to pass this, which I, I'm supportive, that one of the components will be, they did, used to do a music piece down at Washington Park. And now they would be doing a music piece at the Black Music Walker fame and be able to bring in some of the younger creatives to be a part of curating it and get people down there to the music corridor and get folks on the banks as well. So I know they'll still be doing something at Washington Park, but this will expand us to be able to have it on the bank. So I do support this effort. So that's all I have on, on the agenda today. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, I just wanted to know generally that in front of us, we have a lot of grants. State grants, federal grants coming to the county. And I, this is, you know, a good sign that we've got additional dollars outside of just our general fund and our own resources to invest in some of the programming that different departments are doing throughout the county. So I want to applaud this continuing effort to try to make sure that we've got resources coming into the county, outside the county. Because there's quite a bit of that on this agenda today. One of them though, item number, I think it's item number eight. One of the grant names is the Heroin Task Force. It should be the Addiction Response Coalition. Just, it's Addiction Response Coalition is noted in a different grant section, but I just wanted to make sure that that name correction.
We'll, we'll get the correction made. I'm sure it's a carryover just from.
Yeah, it's just an update. That's right. Thank you for that. Also, I was going to focus, I think we're all on the same page when it comes to the small business grant going out. I too heard from very small businesses that couldn't comply with some of the things that were in place originally. And, and each time we do a small business grant, we learn something and we adjust. And then we put another round out when the funds are available. And this is just another example of that. And I know Holly Christman, I think she's in the room. I want to applaud Holly for just continuing to evolve when it comes to what we're hearing from the community, what we're hearing from folks that are applying but are being denied because they are not auditable or because they don't have the resources for this, that, or the other thing. The really small businesses that are really struggling and trying to figure out a way to be as inclusive as possible. And this is a result of that. So I, I too want to applaud that effort and thank the United Way for being our partner. Once again, delivering small business relief to the community. And then I too was going to talk a little bit about Blink. This is the second large event to which these funds are going from that allocation in the last year's budget. And I think it's really important that this signifies our partnership when it comes to some of these large events that bring so much economic vitality. And it really produce a tremendous ROI, a return on investment for the investors. And so that the county and the city and the private sector are now all partners in this, I think is appropriate. And I think it shows our commitment to generating that kind of economic activity through some of these large events that we are now investing in. So I thank you for coming and giving us the overview of that. That's all I have, other than, I don't know, Madam President, what you intend to do with item number 16. I will expand on this if need be. There is a timing element to it. But if we're going to approve of that, I, I won't go into all the detail, but if, if there is a some question about holding it, I'd be happy to provide some information regarding the timing.
Sure. I had actually written down delay if we could. If not only to respect the people that had sent the letter that we have not seen yet, to be able to read over that and the courtesy of doing that. And you were saying there's a time, did you want to speak, Mike?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I thought Leslie.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Commissioner, but during the meeting, I do believe Kerry Davis just sent me the letter. So.
Okay, okay.
I'll get back to you after the meeting.
Okay.
I could also say, I spoke with the prosecutor who advised me during the meeting. I just texted and she confirmed that she saw no conflict there.
Okay, thank you.
So that the timing element is that this position expired in May. And I know we're all sensitive to board appointments and trying not to have them be vacant, but, but Mr. DiPuccio is serving. There is a 60-day grace period through which he can continue to serve. And that, but then there has to be an appointment or a reappointment for that position. And so that's the timing of this. And I do want to say too, just we, the Solid Waste Policy Committee meets once a month. And so it is not as frequent as this board. So that is another concern related to the timing. And to give just a little bit more, and I know Brad is, is Brad still here? Brad is here and, and can speak to this. This appointment, we, we are trying to create, and I think, and I'm fairly new to the board, as both of you know. Todd Portune used to be the delegate from the commission, and now I am the delegate from the commission. But in my experience, we have tried to create balance on this policy committee to make sure that all voices are heard. And so to some of the comments, and I think we got a couple of the emails earlier today. I, I was going through my email and I think I saw a couple of them. And so there is representation on the board. And there's another member actually coming up for appointment that I think it's the general interest member. There's also a public member. Then this, this is the waste generator member. So there's some, you know, diversity of thought usually in that group. And then we've got a city rep, a county rep, the township rep. And then Greg Kesterman, the health commissioner, also serves on the board. So we are trying to create some balance. And so Mr. DiPuccio does have, as I noted earlier, a lot of historical and institutional knowledge related to the solid waste district because he was there at the inception of the district. And his knowledge base has been helpful. He also does have an understanding of the industry. And Rumpke, as was mentioned, while I think some people feel like that presents a challenge for us. The flip of that is that we have an industry perspective at the table, raising concerns as we go. And so that we are not creating policy or creating a plan that does not have some input from all of those affected, including the industry. And so from my perspective, and this really goes back to my state rep days where I was a big fan of interested parties where you bring everybody to the table, whether they agree or disagree with one another, and make sure you've rounded out that conversation. So you're making your best effort. And so I feel as though with some of the other reps representing the general public and some of the more environmentally focused issues and concerns, there is representation. And I am committed to making sure that representation continues. But also there is some industry representation here with one individual that brings that knowledge base and that perspective to the conversations. So I just wanted to add a little bit of texture to this so that as we contemplate this item, there's some history about Mr. DiPuccio. And again, you know, Greg Kesterman, there was a subcommittee of two. And we had two applicants for the position. Tony was one, and there, there was another woman from the zoo that applied. And of those two, Greg Kesterman was the one that's advised that he thought Tony was the, the most appropriate and the best fit. I do want to thank the woman from the zoo that applied. And then we did take a vote of the policy committee, a three to one vote. So that's the context for the vote and the item.
Thank you so much for the clarity. And we, you said make 60 days from May. So we really could make the appointment at the end of June. We have a meeting at the end of June. Nothing against Mr. DiPuccio. I don't, I don't know him, but as a respect for the people who did take time and submit the letters and concerns, I would like to just have a moment to review what they sent in. And then if we could delay it into our June meeting, which I think is the 28th, I believe. I would be more comfortable with it. Or, or you, I would have.
Well, can I ask Brad? Brad, I don't remember when, and I don't have time to look it up on my calendar, when the policy committee meets then and how that timing works out.
Yeah, I don't know the exact date of the next meeting, but it could get into an issue of the 60-day window that she was discussing. And I will, Commissioner Drehouse, very well put. I would agree that the the Howard Revice Code, the, the intent of this back in the late 80s when the state was looking to form these solid waste districts was to have representation across the table for these policy committee. And one of the representatives is indeed to represent the generators. And I would agree with Commissioner Drehouse that Mr. DiPuccio actually checks that box very well.
I have no, I have no question as it relates to him. I just, I think we, I also need to respect what was submitted. So I have no problem with that. And you were saying in May.
I'm, I'm trying to find the date.
It was in May. It's a two-year term. And then we have a 60-day window to.
Sure, I heard. I wrote that down.
So as long as we have a meeting before then, I think it would be perfectly fine.
So we have until July. That's what I was trying to say. Is it like May the 6th?
When did it expire in May?
Well, let's, let's say worst case scenario. I don't know the exact date. I did send a message to my staff to see if we can find that. It's.
If we did it June, the 30th, which is Thursday next, we could, not next Thursday, but the following, we would still be in the window of time. It's not July yet. So I would ask the board to allow, at least allow me the time to review what was sent in and then make a decision or I can abstain from the, the vote either way.
Can I just ask, so the vote that we're referring to then, the policy committee has recommended this. So the 30, the 60-day window is from when this board.
That's correct.
Approves of this. So we don't, okay, so I'm just trying to walk back the math.
You bring up a good point. You know, our date, the May date, might have actually been when he was given the recommendation from the policy committee. So we would have to actually go back two years and see when the, the county commissioners, that would be the official date. I'm looking to you, Michael, if that's accurate.
I mean, it would be when his term officially ended.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened when that was, but that would be the date, not the actual.
I would think so, yeah.
Right. And my understanding, it could have happened prior to that recommendation because as I recall, there was some question about the timing because we were up against the 60 window when the policy committee was considering that. So I can't say one way or the other on that timing right now. I understand.
Okay, so.
All right, any other questions for me?
No. All right, thank you. Appreciate the clarity.
You're welcome.
So I would ask the board if we could just delay out of respect for constituents that have submitted something. Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I, I am anxious about the timing here. But, so I do, I disagree with the idea of removing this from the agenda because I think there's a timing element to this. And, and the communications did come in prior to the meeting. So we did have access to those. So I, you know, I'm.
She says she just received the letter.
There were some emails that were sent.
I'm talking about the letter that they were talking.
I think it's the same thing. I think the emails are the letters. But, but I could be wrong. There could be additional letters.
And.
And there was something.
League of Women Voters or something was also included on there. Okay. So do I need to make a motion to delay? Okay. I, I'd like to make a motion to delay item 16 until our next legislative meeting.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
No.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to make one thing of clarity, just to make sure I have this right. Item number eight, item number, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're finished.
I just wanted to go back to item number nine.
Okay.
It's a grant that we're giving the United Way. And I just want to make sure, to the administrator, I just want to make sure I was right. This is a grant for the nonprofits.
This is the smaller nonprofit grant that we're administering. Nonprofits that we're administering, administering through United Way. And so assuming passage of this, we will actually begin notifying that and getting it out to nonprofits probably tomorrow.
So it's going to be great. Yep, so this for the small nonprofits.
Correct.
Like I said, that's something I know all three of us were concerned about. So that's.
And the reference, pardon me, but the reference I made was we keep learning from the small business grant, which we altered, altered, and nonprofit grant similarly. But I may have misstated that this is a small business, it's nonprofits.
Yeah, no problem. I just don't want the small businesses. The small nonprofits, but still credit to Holly who has been working on this. So thanks.
Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four through 15 and items 17 through 19.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we have before us two executive sessions. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to a higher revised code session, section 121.22 G4 to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Wait, I'm going to read the next one. I was trying to get some decorum in the room. Excuse me, guys in the back? Thank you. And a, a motion for a second executive session pursuant to ORC 12122 G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning pending litigation.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.